Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council that will be held on Monday, April 7th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for April 7th, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Thank you. Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
Thank you. And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our presentation this evening is Dubuque Police Department Crisis Intervention Team 365, Inc., Impact Award.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Brendan. I'm with the Crisis Intervention Team. This is my partner, Corporal Cross, or Joel, as we call him. And then Lieutenant McTag, Mike, and then not with us is our liaison, Caitlin Doyle. But we're here to present you our 365, Inc., Impact Award that we received, what was it, about a month ago? For our work, we had a member of the public nominate us for it, for the work that we do with individuals in crisis. So we wanted to bring it here, show you guys, and thank you for your support with us.
Well, thank you. I mean, this, you know, when you came to us and talked about creating a crisis intervention team, it was clear that it was one of the best ideas that we had heard in a long time. And clearly, the community thinks so too. So I want to make sure that, no, we, we're giving that back to you, yeah. We're not going to keep that up here. We'll get a picture with it though in a second here. Yeah, yeah, make sure Cory gets it, yeah. We're running all over. So, I just want to say, on behalf of the entire community, the entire city, and obviously the entire City Council, thank you and congratulations. Great work.
Thank you. Did you guys want a picture with it?
Let's do it. Yeah, get up here. Let's take a picture, yeah. You got it? Okay, thanks Cory. Hempstead, you're coming next, so just get ready for this, okay?
There'll be a lot more to get in this.
We'll just put it in. Yeah, you're great.
We've got Photoshop more into this.
Oh, yeah, we'll get, yeah, we'll get.
Put them on the screen.
All right, thanks a lot, guys. Thank you.
We'll move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is Hempstead High School 2025 State Men's Swimming Team Championship.
All right, well, Coach Luffelholtz, and I think, good amount of the team here, so feel free to say a few words, and then we'll read the proclamation.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and City Council Members, for honoring us tonight with this proclamation. I'm Rick Luffelholtz, the head men's swim coach at Hempstead High School, and with me tonight are the student athletes, managers, and assistant coaches from this year's state championship team. I wanted to share our gratitude tonight for all the support our team has received throughout the season from fans, parents, teachers, administration, and community members like ourselves here tonight. They've helped us with a positive influence on our journey towards the championship. To help us drive beyond limits was our theme this year. I also wanted to thank the, ironically enough, the local and state police who also received the award tonight. They helped give us an escort back from the state championship, one that our state team members will never forget. Also thanking tonight is Ms. Wethel for kind of starting this process, Adrian Brightfelder for helping me through the process, and also want to take a special moment for Ms. Farber and Mr. Jones for coming to our mall celebration. All these celebrations are truly unique for us, as it's our first experience going through this experience. The outpouring of congratulations is motivating, and it helps us understand what happens when we commit and work hard towards our success. I also want to take a brief moment to talk about our current pool facility. It's top-notch. Five years ago, it was brand-new, thanks to a partnership with Dash and Dubuque Community School District. And since then, the maintenance staff at Dubuque Hempstead has just been outstanding, top-notch, and they deserve to be recognized. We go to newer pools throughout the state of Iowa, and when we go to these new pools, they're just not the same. Our maintenance staff has done an awesome job there. It's an amazing place to coach and an amazing place to swim, and we're grateful, truly grateful, for all those who helped donate and contributed to that process of building the new pool. The community, specifically the swimming community in Dubuque, is strong. It has great coaches at the YMCA and Dash. It's through these programs our high schools are blessed with great student athletes who swim fast. But most importantly, they take the life lessons learned through sport and make themselves great, not just in the water, but out of the water as well. They want to represent Dubuque well wherever we swim. The saying that it takes a village is so true, and we are blessed to be a part of this amazing facility, or amazing community of Dubuque. So on behalf of the Hempstead Mustangs Swim Team, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and for everyone's support along the way. Council members, we even have little bag tags from our state championship that we wanted to provide you with tonight, and so you can remember this as a momentous occasion, so thank you again.
Well, Coach, thank you very much, and, you know, first of all, thank you for taking this opportunity, not just to talk about your own program, but to talk about the importance of swimming and the importance of sport in the city of Dubuque. I love the fact that you took this opportunity to do that in the words that you just said, so thank you. Guys, congratulations. This is a big deal. This is a big deal to be able to do this, and if you couldn't tell by the fact that you got a police escort and city council members showing up at your party, you know, it's something we're really proud of. So thank you very much. Thank you very much for all the work you put in. I know it's not easy to do that, but it probably was a pretty fun time, so I'm glad that you were able to bring this home for everybody. And I just have to say that as a proud Mustang graduate, I'm definitely excited about this one, so thank you very much, and go Mustangs. All right, City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Dubuque Hempstead High School's men's swimming team has had a remarkable 2025 season and brought home the 2025 Iowa Men's Swimming Team Championship on Saturday, February 15th, 2025. And whereas that championship earned Dubuque Hempstead their first state team championship in the history of the school and the city of Dubuque's second state swimming championship since 2009. And whereas this championship was won with a total of 213.5 points, outdistancing their nearest competitors by 32.5 points. The Mustangs had 10 swimmers earn a place on the podium and broke six varsity school records. Their team win was highlighted by two relay state titles while earning two automatic All-American times in both the 200 and 400 free relays. The coaching staff was also recognized as the state coaching staff of the year. And whereas in achieving this victory, Dubuque Hempstead players and coaches have brought an enormous amount of pride to our community and our city, displaying sportsmanship, exceptional commitment, and hard work. At the conclusion of their championship season, Dubuque Hempstead swimmers won the JV Invite, MVC Fresh Soft Meat, District Meat, and State Meat. Truly a great championship season by the entire team. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby recognize the Dubuque Hempstead Men's Swim Team as the 2025 State Men's Swimming Team Champions. Come on up. Let's do a picture quick, that'd be great. Yeah, congrats. No, no, you guys can have that one, yeah. No, it's bigger than me, so we'll just let you guys have that one.
Thanks for being here, everybody.
You have to squish together. You're going to have to squish.
Yeah, you're good. Yeah, you're good right there. We'll get in between you. All right, thanks, you guys. Congrats.
Our second proclamation is National Public Health Week.
All right, Sidney Oldhoff, I think, is here to accept this proclamation. Come on up.
Hello, Mayor Kavanaugh and City Council. Just on behalf of the Health Department, would like to thank you for this. Public health wears many hats, and what we do is extremely important, so this means a lot to us.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for being here to accept this proclamation, but for all the work that you all do every single day of the year. You know, we really appreciate every aspect of it. We got a chance to talk about it last week, a little bit, in our budget hearing, which is, you know, a little less well-attended sometimes, but, you know, we get these nice opportunities to be able to have discussions like this, and I really appreciate that you bring this proclamation forward every single year, so keep that up. I think it's great to be able to recognize you all in this way.
Yeah, thank you very much.
City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas the week of April 7th, 2025, is the 30th anniversary of National Public Health Week, and the theme is "It Starts Here," highlighting the importance of public health. And whereas the city has experienced many positive benefits of public health programs and initiatives, including: One, deaths due to HIV and AIDS have dropped with treatments and prevention. Number two, smoking rates have fallen from 26% to 16% in Dubuque County due to smoke-free policies. Number three, childhood mortality has dropped due to vaccines, better healthcare access, and nutrition. Number four, mental health awareness and treatment rates have progressed with awareness, parity laws, and expanded access to mental health services. Number five, lead poisoning has now fallen to less than 0.5% due to policies and funding to reduce lead in paint, pipes, and water systems. And number six, health impacts of climate change, such as rising heat-related deaths, are now being mitigated by actions like public health campaigns and cooling and warming centers. And whereas racial and ethnic minority populations continue to experience health disparities and the burden of illness and death. And a person's health status can differ drastically by zip code due to social determinants of health. And whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, ranging from infectious disease outbreaks to natural disaster preparedness and pandemics. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025, as National Public Health Week in the city of Dubuque, Iowa, and call upon the people of Dubuque to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to recognize the contribution of public health in improving the health of the people of our city and achieving health for all. As the theme states, it starts here.
Our third proclamation is Animal Control Appreciation Week.
All right, so McKinsey and Madison, but it must be just...
Just me.
Just you.
I'm Mackenzie Flanagan. I'm with City Dubuque Animal Control. I just wanted to thank everyone here for this honor, and I wanted to thank all of the citizens of Dubuque for helping us help animals. Without everyone, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, and thank you so much for this honor.
Yeah, and I'll say the same to you. Thank you very much for putting this proclamation forward and making sure that we recognize the work that you're doing. It is an important part of a city. It's definitely part of public health, and it's definitely part of keeping everybody feeling safe and secure. And the pictures that we got to see with you last week of some of the things that you're doing, it's just, I'm very thankful that you're in our community and you're doing the work that you do, so thank you very much. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Animal Control Officers and Animal Care and Control Personnel Week, personnel work tirelessly to protect animals and people, enforce laws, rescue animals in need, and promote responsible pet ownership. And whereas these professionals respond to emergencies, assist law enforcement, and safeguard public health through disease prevention and humane enforcement. And whereas their dedication ensures the safety and well-being of our community's animals and residents, often working in challenging and unpredictable conditions. And whereas Animal Control Appreciation Week is nationally recognized during the second full week of April, honoring the vital work of these professionals. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as Animal Control Appreciation Week in the city of Dubuque, Iowa, and I encourage all residents to join in thanking the animal control professionals who serve our community.
Our fourth proclamation is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Okay. Jessica George, I should have put my, it's Resnick, right? Is that, Restwich, thank you very much. I should have my glasses on just to read the names.
You're good, that's, that's good. Some people don't even attempt it. So Jessica George Restwich, Director of Emergency Communications, and Caitlin McDade, one of my lead dispatchers, is here. We just want to take an opportunity to thank you for acknowledging the hard work that the 911 professionals do for not only Dubuque, but nationwide. Dispatchers are sometimes known as the unsung heroes, and most of them are okay with that. They like just being in the shadows and doing what they're supposed to do, but it's a tough job, and we very much appreciate all the hard work they put in, from taking the calls to the training and everything above, so thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you both for being here, and you're absolutely right. The work you do is absolutely essential in a city, and we thank you for it. And we might not thank you for it every single day in this way, but know that we sincerely appreciate the work that you're doing. And I know you like it, in the shadows is a little bit tough, I think, but it is kind of dark in there a lot of the time when you're doing the work, because it kind of has to be. But, and I know you kind of like that, you know, just working quietly and getting it done, and that recognition isn't necessarily the reason that you do it, but you deserve the recognition. This is serious work, it's very difficult work, and know that we, as a city council, appreciate it, and the people who have had to call you and the people who will have to call you definitely appreciate it. So thank you for being here tonight to accept this proclamation.
Thank you.
City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from residents who telephone the Dubuque Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our residents have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators and the Dubuque Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Dubuque, Iowa, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and residents safe.
Her final proclamation is Dubuque YP Days of Caring.
And Brittany Hayes is here with us to accept this one.
My name is Brittany Hayes, and I am one of the co-chairs for the Days of Caring Board. And on behalf of the whole Days of Caring Board, I would like to say thank you for acknowledging this event. This is around the 15th year that this has been organized in Dubuque. Our final numbers, we don't have exactly, but we'll have at least 1,100 volunteers participate this year. We have around 42 organizations that are hosting projects, and we have about 64 projects in total. So we are very excited for this event this year.
Wow, well, thank you very much. But this is such a great day, too, to have this. You know, it's always so much fun at the end of April, and we have so many different teams of people running around town, and you go anywhere in the city, and you can see everybody doing all kinds of work together, and it's such a great community-building activity. Just makes, I think it really, it points out the pride that we have in Dubuque and allows people to show that in a really great way, so thanks a lot for being a part of organizing it again this year.
Thank you.
City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Dubuque is a city known for its spirit of volunteerism and community pride. And whereas young professionals of Dubuque is an organization in Dubuque committed to making the city a wonderful place to live, work, and play. And whereas Dubuque YP Days of Caring is a community event where more than 1,400 volunteers conduct projects and nonprofits throughout the city. And whereas Dubuque YP Days of Caring benefits not only those nonprofits, but the entire city of Dubuque. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 25th day of April 2025 as Dubuque YP Days of Caring.
We'll now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, do we have anyone virtually?
No. No input.
All right, then back to the table.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to items set for public hearing. We have two. First is Old Mill Road Lift Station Enforce Main Project Phase 2 Initiate Public Bidding Process and Setting Date for a Public Hearing for April 21st, 2025. And second is setting a public hearing for the Jules Iowa Department of Transportation's Consolidated Funding Application for May 19th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and set the public dates for the date specified.
Second by Wethel.
Yeah, I got a motion by Sprank, and second by Wethel. I heard you say, "public dates," do you mean public hearings?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
And adopt the resolutions.
Oh, I forgot, adopt the resolutions.
Yes, and adopt the resolutions.
Okay, so add "adopt the resolutions" to the motion. Thank you very much, Krena. So I got a motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. We're all clear. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Move on to boards and commissions. We have applicant review for the zoning board of adjustment.
All right, we have one five-year term through March 25th, 2030, for the zoning board of adjustment, and we have one applicant, Keith Alvin. Do we have anyone here to speak to this application this evening? And that desk does move, there's a little button there. If you want to put it up a little bit farther. Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah.
Good evening, my name is Keith Alvin. My address is 264 South Grandview, and I am seeking reappointment to the zoning board of adjustments. Adjustment, I've served on the board since January of 2016, the last few years as its vice chairperson. The zoning board of adjustment is essential not only for the continued growth and development of the city, but also in protecting the rights of and investments made by existing residents, property owners, and businesses, and I would be honored if allowed the opportunity to serve another term. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Keith, for your comments. Do we have any other comments this evening on this application? Anything virtually?
None.
Okay, all right, then we can move on.
Move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is hold a public hearing to adopt the five-year Public Housing Authority Plan 2025 through 2029.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones, and a second by Farber. Am I coming to you, Cory? All right, Cory, please.
Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger is recommending city council receive input on the five-year Public Housing Authority, or PHA, plan and approve the adoption of the five-year PHA plan. The city of Dubuque is a public housing authority, PHA, that provides housing assistance to residents. A PHA is required to submit a five-year plan once every fifth fiscal year and the annual plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, each remaining fiscal year. The five-year PHA plan was reviewed by the Housing Commission on April 1st, 2025, where the commission was given the opportunity to review the plan and provide input and comments. The Housing Commission recommended that the city council approve and adopt the five-year PHA plan. Additionally, HUD requires that the Resident Advisory Commission, comprised of all residents on assisted housing, review the proposed plan. The Resident Advisory Commission meeting was held on February 12th, 2025. The five-year plan covers the period from 2025 to 2029 and includes goals and priorities for the Public Housing Authority. This five-year plan will be used to create the PHA annual plan for the next four years for annual reporting purposes. This five-year PHA plan is focused on the following concepts for the city of Dubuque: increasing the number of homeowners participating in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, promoting self-sufficiency, tenant education, supporting childcare initiatives in the community, increasing landlord participation in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and decreasing concentrated areas of poverty. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
All right, thank you, Cory. We are in a public hearing to consider city council receive input on the five-year PHA plan and approve the adoption of the five-year PHA plan. Do we have any public input on this item? Seeing none here, anything virtually?
None.
All right, thank you both. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing and hearing none. I'll just say thank you to the Housing Commission for their work on this every single year, that this does come before us, that it is something that is definitely something that the Housing Commission has reviewed more, so I appreciate their service for this. All right, we got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is Heeb Street Reconstruction Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Wethel, second by Sprank. Cory, please.
City Engineer Gus Sahoyes is recommending city council approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $677,849 for the Heeb Street Reconstruction Project through the adoption of the enclosed resolution. This project will include the reconstruction of the street with seven-inch HMA pavement, new curb and gutter, new sidewalk on the west side, installation of a modified cul-de-sac at the end of the street, and the complete replacement of all water main, sanitary main, and associated services for both utilities. The historic brick pavers under the existing asphalt street will be salvaged and stockpiled for future use on a city project. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Heeb Street Reconstruction Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here. Anything virtually?
None.
Okay. All right. Back to the table then for discussion. So, I do have a question. Is there somebody here from engineering? Yeah, John, if you wouldn't mind. I'd appreciate it. Just, it's a, it's kind of a simple question, but I just wanted to make sure I ask. So, this is a massive project. I understand it's a pretty small street. It's not affecting that many residents, but it's going to affect their lives pretty drastically. I'm just making sure that we are, are we communicating with everybody? And can you talk a little bit about how that process is working?
Yeah, so this is John Dean, civil engineer out of engineering. So, the contractor has in the proposed contract there to accommodate property owners for access to their properties. You know, that could be potentially golf carts or any number of different ways of trying to accommodate them. The concern for us is we're talking like seven or eight houses. It's very dim, it's limited access for sure. It's a 22-foot wide street. So, during the day, the contractor has to be able to get people to and from their homes, grocery shopping, that kind of stuff. There's people accommodate that effort. And at night, they need to be able to provide backfilling of trenches so at least people can walk back and get to their property. So, that has been some, we had a pre-bid meeting with potential bidders and talked to them about that, that concern and that issue for access to the street.
Okay. And forgive me for this question because I know it's in the, in here, but the timeline for the, for the project runs through August of this year. So, it's basically the summer months?
Yeah, the intent is to have it done before school starts.
Okay.
You know, not that, not that, you know, just in case there's an issue with getting kids down to a bus stop, but we're trying to, really trying to also just force the contractor to get in, get out. You know, we really don't want them any, any longer than they have to be because we know the inconvenience to the public for sure.
Gotcha. Excellent. Thank you, John. I just wanted to make sure that question was asked because it's, it's a big project.
It's been a concern of ours for, well, for the last three or four years since we've been wanting to kind of get this project done. And we just have been delayed just because of other things that have gotten in the way of the priorities. But it is an ignorant street, but it is, it's been 1910 since it's been, since any of the utility has been touched.
Wow.
Lots of lead ser, lead services that are winding up through people's yards. It's kind of a mess, you know, utility-wise, so we're really trying to, you know, make it, bring it all up to 2025 standards and get everybody tied in and, and try to make it as painless as possible. But it's, it's going to be a struggle for sure.
Great. Well, I'm glad to hear that there's a concerted effort to try to make sure that helps people get through it as they have to go through it.
Local letters, phone calls, door-to-door. Oh, yeah.
Good. All right. Well, thank you, John. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's, that's important work as a part of all this, and this is going to be a nice project to have done for sure.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number three is Heeb Street Reconstruction Project Special Assessments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Cory, please.
City Engineer Gus Sahoyes is recommending city council approval of the schedule of assessments for the Heeb Street Reconstruction Project through the adoption of the enclosed resolutions. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of the schedule of assessments for the Heeb Street Reconstruction Project. Do we have any public input on this item? Seeing none here. Anything virtually?
None.
Thank you. All right. Back to us then for discussion or questions. All right. Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolutions. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number four is Private Lead Service Line Replacement Pilot Program, Phase One Construction Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Cory, please.
Water Department Director Chris Lester is recommending city council adopt the resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $1,732,630 for the Private Lead Service Line Replacement Pilot Program Phase One Construction. The City of Dubuque is taking part in a unique opportunity to assist approximately 585 homes in three phases, owner-occupied or rented homes, within the city with the functional replacement of private lead water service lines by trenching or pull-through methods to prevent the potential for drinking water contamination at a house-by-house level. This phase of the pilot program is 100% voluntary and is open to those residents with a verified drinking water lead service line, meeting the socioeconomic guidelines established by the bipartisan infrastructure law. The scope of work in the first phase includes the replacement of approximately 200 lead service lines identified throughout the city's water distribution service area. Water department staff visited property owners and verified the service line material was lead piping. And to reduce lead exposure to both the homeowner or tenant and the contractors during construction, the preferred methods of replacement by the Iowa DNR are the pull-through and directional drill techniques for service line replacements. These methods also minimize property and soil disturbance beyond the original service trench. As the project is being funded using bill funds, there are specific requirements that must be adhered to in determining project costs that are eligible for loan forgiveness and overall SRF funding. Due to the nature of the project, such that the project extends to the interior of a private home, premise plumbing is considered not an eligible expense for either traditional SRF or bill SRF funds. Some interior or premise plumbing will be required as part of the service line replacement. Therefore, the cost estimate provided below contains funding from local funds to cover premise plumbing. Local funds will be requested for reallocation from a water treatment plant roof repair project during the budget amendment. The reallocated water treatment plant roof repair funds will be requested in fiscal year 2026. The funding summary is as follows. Funding source: Private Lead Line Replacement Program SRF funds, $1,931,800, and local funds, $96,000, for a total project funding of $2,027,800. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt the resolution approving the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Private Lead Service Line Replacement Pilot Program Phase One Construction. Do we have any public input on this item this evening? Seeing none here. Anything virtually?
Nope.
Thank you both. All right. Back to us then for any discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, Mr. Lester is here. And so, 585, is that the limit? Is that less? Or are we expanding the program a little bit to make, you know, more room for people? What do we have? And how does that compare with the allowable number?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Chris Lester, Water Department Director. So, the 585 homes that we are looking to replace now as part of our pilot program, originally the, the DNR had seeked to fund or make forgivable about 90% of the project. So, initially we were looking to tackle 5,500, like the, our anticipated 5,500 lead service lines in the city. Then the, then the DNR and the Iowa Finance Authority released the socioeconomic status and determined that only homes in the eligible census tracts were available. So, that, that further reduced the scope of our project down to about 3,350 homes. At that point, the, the 10% that we had budgeted to replace the 3,350 homes was about 3.5 million. And so, when we, when we had learned that it was highly recommended that we were not to assess the customers for the, and the disadvantaged areas for their portion, the lead service line, the service lines in, obviously, Dubuque are owned 100% by the customer, they're not owned by the utility. So, essentially, the roughly 3.5 million that we had budgeted for the replacement of 3,347 lines was what we had put into the budget, and that broke down into what turned out to be 49% forgivable. The DNR was not able to secure funding to make it 90% forgivable. This is a mouthful. It's like the wheels are turning in my own head trying to make this make sense as I'm speaking it here. So, essentially, the money that we had budgeted, that we anticipated being 90% forgivable at 3,347 homes, turned out to be 49%, 49% forgivable, and we use that to figure approximately 585 homes is what we could afford based on what we had budgeted at 49% forgivable. And if, if that doesn't make sense, I'm happy to try and explain that to you again.
So, 585 is the target number?
Correct.
And we've got that. Did we have more than 585 who would like? And we just had to cut it off as first come, first served? How is that dealt with?
Yeah. So, essentially, there's tracks identified in the city that, again, per this socioeconomic scoring tool created by the DNR and the Iowa Finance Authority, certain tracks in Dubuque scored higher. You had to meet a certain number. I believe it was a score in 11. So, what we did is we worked with the DNR. We identified those tracks. And for this first phase, the DNR wanted us to look at homes that could utilize that pull-through method, as Cory read in her memo. Essentially, the pull-through method, the focus, the reason for wanting to do, work on that was because originally we had planned on doing these first 200 homes in calendar year 2025, so last year. We're about a year behind where we actually anticipated wanting to be, and that's because we're working with the DNR, and we're kind of learning this, learning this program together. But the intent to do the pull-through was because we have to work with the State Historic Preservation Office, and they do a review on every single property on every site that we intend to replace the service line on. And they were, they were worried about like any historic landscaping, anything in the yard that would be disturbed. So, that's why we're looking at this pull-through method as far as an open trench. The process for the environmental review and everything was, was quite lengthy, which is why we're, we're pushing this first phase back into construction season of 2025. And honestly, I've kind of forgotten the question there. I kind of went off on a little tangent there. I apologize. But essentially, yeah, the number right now is 585. There's a, you know, with our lead service inventory that we were required to post online, we've reduced what we suspected to be about 5,400 lead service lines to about 4,500. That's in part with resident participation, with our staff doing in-home verifications. So, of course, we expect, you know, with being confident in about 4,500 lead service lines remaining, that there would be more than 585 homeowners, property owners that would like to get their lead service line replaced at no cost to them. Unfortunately, right now, that's what is available to us for the bill funding. And, you know, we, we're, we're secure in the funds that we have for this first phase, these 200 homes. We don't know for phases two and three, which we're looking to do next construction season, if those fundings will necessarily be there. You know, everything's kind of fluid right now in Congress, I guess. So, but we're moving forward that the funds are going to be there. And then, obviously, we're, we're keeping our, our ear open for any potential funding that could replace these lines at low or no cost to the resident.
So, if the funding disappears, we stop work? Or is that how that works? Is we're going to start the work hoping that the money is, is sent to us? Or?
Correct. Yeah. So, we're, like I said, we're, we're working on this first phase, the 200 homes. That, that money is secured. Obviously, we're, we're going to start, not obviously, but we're working to get phases two and three secured. We're working on, we're working on getting a contract with origin design for the engineering for phases two and three. But you're, you're right that if we're not able to honor the terms and conditions that we've been communicating to the residents, then yes, that project will, the project will stop. We're not, we would not replace a lot of these service lines and that we've communicated to customers that would be at no cost to them and then say, "We're sorry, but now it's," you know, that $12,000 to $15,000 cost is now put onto the homeowner. So...
Okay. So, 200 are secured. So, we're ready to move forward. Final question is the granters, did they say that they wanted that the people who have the work done for them, did the grantor say they didn't want them to pay anything? Or did, how did they anticipate the premises plumbing work to be paid? Do they kind of expect the city to pick up the premises work? Or did they expect the private owner to? It's hard to tell.
Sure. So, that, that goes back to the discussions that we've had with the DNR where cities were highly discouraged to assess the homeowners for the cost of that because they were identified as being in socioeconomic tracts labeled as disadvantaged. The decision to do the interior plumbing was to bring it up to our city code as well. So, that was a discussion that we had internally. If we're going to replace a service line for these customers, let's bring everything up to code. So, a lot of the homes that we're looking at that we've done verifications for are already up to code, but there's some that are not. So, that's where those local funds come in that we're pulling from another project to, to bring those homes up to code at the same time while we're, while we're in the home. So...
Great. Thank you for those answers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I had a constituent talk to me about what the process would be. This person was concerned about the need to bring someone into their home to do the assessment. That is part of the requirement. Is that true then for every home for the inspection initially before you can be part of the project?
That's correct. And the terminology that we stress with the residents is that we're doing a verification. We're not there for any sort of inspection. It's, it's not a gotcha. We're strictly there to get in your basement, to look at that meter, the, the area around your meter to verify that it's lead. Like I say, we're not, we're not there to write you up for not having dual-check valves or anything at all. It's strictly to go in there, test that it's lead, verify, because we need to, we need to have that verification complete. So, when we submit that address to the DNR for SRF funding, that we've, we can say that we've verified that it's lead. We've had, we've had our staff. We take photos of it. And that's, that's why we need to get into the house. So, it's, it's, there's no inspection, no, no gotcha to that at all. It's just simply to have staff members' eyes on that service line coming in to verify it's lead.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm hoping that we approve this because I know I've got neighbors that are looking forward to having this project done. I had some neighbors who had, they had water and sewer line break over the winter, and their bills to do that was close to $20,000. And this was not, this was not the idea, this is not the pull-through method. This is, they dug up the hole, the street, mad mess. So, I know a number of citizens are looking forward to this. So, I'm hoping we get, approve it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Am I reading this correctly, that we're, we're going to be talking about this again during the budget process because we need to reallocate these funds from another project? Is that what I'm seeing in the memo here?
Correct. So, we, what we're doing is we're going to scale back our, some repairs on the roof. Obviously, at the treatment plant itself, we have several sections of roofs. So, what we're going to do is just scale that project back. We had additional funds requested. It's not going to, it's not going to really, it won't be additional requests. This is going to be moving forward with requests that we had for FY 2026. So, there will not be an additional burden or an additional last-minute ask. It's just funds that we already have requested in FY 26, and we're just going to shift the project around, make some adjustments, and kind of plan accordingly. So, yeah, you won't see anything, you know, last-minute requests coming into this budget, which has already been challenging.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, that's, that's helpful to know. Well, on that note, I think, I, first of all, I think this is the right thing to do. I, I think that this project in general is the right thing to do. And I think it was, it was a very exciting program when it first came out. And then it sort of got less and less exciting as we went through the process, as we started to realize that the, the funding was much more restricted than we thought it was going to be. And now there's a question of whether the funding will even last, which is really unfortunate because I think this is something that, not only Dubuque, but I think the country needs this. I mean, we've got a lot of lead service lines everywhere. And, but just for us here, you mentioned, what is it, 4,500 now, give or take, that we, that we think we have in the city? That's, that's a lot. And it would be great to be able to just be rid of them so we can move forward. And this is going to be really helpful, but especially for people who aren't necessarily able to afford this on their own to just go and, and get it done. So, I do think it's a good idea to add those actual local funds in there and do what you're suggesting with the, the changeover. Because I, I think it's, like you said, get everything up to code, do it right. If we're going to go in there, might as well do it right and get it done and then come back out. So, I appreciate this work. I think, I'm definitely going to vote for it. I mean, it's, it, this has been something we've been talking about for a long time, and the details have just changed every time. So, now we're kind of finalizing where we are. So, thank you for your work on it, Chris, and you and your team. Appreciate it for sure.
Of course.
All right. Well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. So, Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number five is public hearing on the Subordination Agreement for DRLP Loan Number 2-23, 1199 Central Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Cory, please.
Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approve the Subordination Agreement with New Silver Lending LLC related to a refinancing of the redevelopment project at 1199 Central Avenue. The project is now complete, and the building is listed for sale. The primary construction loan has reached maturity and needs to be refinanced. The attached agreement maintains the parties' subordination positions under the refinanced loan. The first repayment position will be New Silver Lending LLC. The city still has a subordination agreement with DI, placing DI in front of the city in the chain of subordination. Under the attached subordination agreement, the positions Under the attached subordination agreement, the positions of repayment ours follows. In first repayment position, New Silver. Second, DI. Third, City of Dubuque. And fourth, Urtens, for a total amount of $1,846,000. An independent appraisal has valued the building at approximately $3.1 million. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Corey. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve the subordination agreement with New Silver Lending LLC related to the refinancing of the redevelopment project at 1199 Central Avenue. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, back to the table.
Mr. Mayor. I just want to be clear that DI is Dubuque Initiatives?
That's correct.
Oh, because it just says DI here, everywhere. Okay, so that's outlined somewhere in the resolution? Or where does that appear in an official capacity? And I don't know if it has to be, but it just says DI rather than Dubuque Initiatives?
Ian Hatch, Economic Development Department. There's a separate subordination agreement with Dubuque Initiatives where those repayment positions are outlined. This one is just between the city and New Silver Lending.
I see, so it's not really necessary for this one?
It's not necessary for this one.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? All right. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Weth, I'm sorry, Rousseau.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening? Yeah, please come on up. And again, just name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Emily Wilson, address is 3135 Nightingale Lane.
Please, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I'm sure you guys have gotten lots of letters and notes about the rezoning of 405 and 575 Cedar Cross. So I just wanted to, once again, say my concerns are about the traffic, especially the road on Nightingale. I don't know how many of you have traveled, especially down to the sports complex. Traffic gets very busy, especially in the summer. I know that there was a traffic study done recently, but from my understanding, it was in November, which does not account for any of that traffic. And it was on Cedar Cross, not Nightingale. I think somebody else has put it in record that there's, like, over 500 cars on, like, a weekend for baseball tournaments on that road. So there is a lot of traffic. I believe it will cause a strain on the local infrastructure. And I also think it will potentially change the character of our neighborhood to rezone from R1 to R4. I just would like you guys to consider the environmental impacts of this. And also, just, you know, the other thing I wanted to mention is, our street on Nightingale, if you go down, we still have sewer. And we don't have city sewer, city water. So my thoughts are, how are we able to do this for right up the street if we still can't provide that to the neighborhood that's already existing? That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily, for your comments.
I'm Jesse Kemp, live at 3,400 Nightingale Lane. I also oppose the rezoning of that property. You know, the Murfords bought that property as an R1, so it's no surprise. Everything around in that area was an R1. But the thing is, they are wanting, they've been trying to sell this without dropping their price to comparable parcels and in and around Dubuque area for the same amount of acres. The other thing is, you know, obviously, I can understand they want to rezone this just to put extra money in their pockets, because the rezoning this would obviously make it more valuable. But is that why we're here? Is it to rezone this, to put extra money in someone's pocket? I also want to ask, you know, can you ask yourself, why are we rezoning this from an R1 all the way to an R4? How come, you know, maybe not like an R2 or an R3? And then also, you know, also look at how many apartment units are already under contract as we speak. From the research I've done, it's over 400. So is there need? Because the vacancy rate in Dubuque is almost double what a thriving community should be. So is there really a need for this apartment complex? Essentially, is what they're wanting to do with it. And lastly, I just ask that, you know, would you want an apartment complex, multiple complexes next to your home? Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
All right, Jesse, thank you for your comments. Any others this evening? Yeah, please.
Hi, I'm Julie Murfeld, 10713 Cottingham Road, Piazza. And my husband Luke and myself have Murfeld Properties, and we currently own the 405 and 575 property on Cedar Cross Road. And we're seeking to rezone that from R1 to R4. The money grab thing, I don't even know. This property's been in my husband's family for over 50 years. This isn't a sporadic decision. Health things have come into factor, and we had to change our life course. So here we are. I don't wish it on anybody, but that's where we find ourselves. Purchased it as an R1, because that's what it's been for over 50 years. And again, we tried to do it as residential. We tried to sell it as residential. We considered moving there ourselves. We even pursued putting our business on there. Again, this has been in my husband's family. This isn't a whim, hey, let's just go turn over a property real quick. It wasn't that scenario. This has been, you know, for sale for quite some time. I mean, as a family, for quite some time. So Cedar Cross Road basically has 40 to 50 businesses along the whole length of it, be it a mile, mile and a half, two miles, right? I am very empathetic towards anybody that this developed around them. I would hate that. I would hate every bit of a city expanding around me if, when I started there, it wasn't like that. That's not why people started there. But things develop, things evolve, and here we are, right? So we now have Cedar Cross, which is where these two addresses are for. There's two to three homes that are residential on a two-mile stretch, and then an additional two that we believe are just being rented out. And then 40 to 50 businesses. This isn't a residential road. This is a full commercial road that happens to have less than five residential properties on it. Anybody that's bought property in the last 25 years or longer since the sports complex has been there and is suddenly surprised that this is a busy area, blows my mind. Do some due diligence. This is a mini arterial. If you chose to go in a subdivision that's on a, even for the last 15 years, it has been a vastly, you know, majority commercial property. But then now it continues to develop, and I don't like that. Well, then, I, you know, I hate that for you. But again, if you made this decision in the last few years, that's, you should have known that going in, that, hey, this is still one of the busiest streets in Dubuque, and you're choosing a subdivision directly off of that. And then, you know, the pieces are going to fall where they may. One of the persons that I know that's, his residence is right there, Mike Reinert, he purchased that in 2021. I don't know how much busier it could have been in 2021. Again, this isn't like we just evolved around it and all of a sudden surprised. And he's a city employee. So it should be of no big surprise for how long this has been in my husband's family, what our process was, you know. He moved in there knowing he's literally buying one of the three residential homes on one of arguably the busiest streets in Dubuque. And then you're surprised that it's busy. I don't get that, you know. And then you use that as an argument to prevent things from, again, progressing. Because of the city's expansion and development and ongoing growth, you know, there's two new traffic-inducing businesses at the other end of Cedar Cross. It's now been approved for 180 units on the other end. I get it, and I totally understand progression. But that progression has made it, we can't do anything with the property that we're on. My situation, which is not anybody's problem, but we are not going to build there. It's not feasible. It's, it can't happen. So then we had to, we were forced with a decision what we're going to do. So over the last couple of years, we've evolved. We tried to. We've tried to make it residential. We tried to do that. Nobody wants to build a house on Cedar Cross Road, because they did their due diligence. And hey, this is a busy area. Maybe I don't want to raise my family here. You know, it's, that's no secret. That didn't just pop up. If you go into that area, I just struggle with somebody being surprised with how busy it is. So anyway, so as far as, you know, property values decreasing, it's proven, once a property goes from residential to commercial, for the, you know, I'm talking about for the two people that may be concerned about their property values decreasing. Should they ever decide to move, I don't care if they move or not. That's their personal opinion. But should they ever decide and pursue rezoning, like we have to do, their property value will go up. I don't know a person on the planet that wouldn't be tickled with the thought of, hey, my property value went up. We're all doing that right now with taxes and everything. So, okay, your property value is going to go up. Then that's just, if you switch to a different thing, and that's just the nature of the beast. I didn't create that. When we initially pursued zoning, we're going for commercial. Again, we were going to put our own business there. Again, this is family property. My husband's grandfather would have loved to see his grandson build his business there. But we had to stop it because they didn't want more commercial or more traffic. You know, zoning has addressed the traffic issue like ad nauseam. And anything that does get built there, developed there, has to be approved by everybody anyway. So it's not like just someone's going to wake up, and there's going to be 12 complexes. It's not big enough for that. We've had a site concept done, just for the sake of knowing, is it feasible or not? You know, there might be a 112-unit apartment that can fit there, not two. And there may be a 112-unit and a duplex. It's still two acres. It's almost three acres. It's a beautiful piece of property. And it's just not our responsibility anymore to just keep it so people don't have to look at something. You're in the middle of town. I don't like it either. That's why we don't live in town, you know. So just doing, you know, growth has gotten us to where we cannot do anything with this property as R1. We've tried it for years. We've tried numerous realtors, you know, price, I don't know. You price your own property, I don't care. We're going by whatever the standard is for the area. And I'm, have no rocket, I'm not a rocket scientist when it comes to property. You tell me what I should price it at, then. So, you know, if somebody wants feedback or input into what somebody's charging for the property, which makes no sense to me whatsoever. Anyway, so with the approval of the two high-traffic businesses at one end, and now you've got 180 units, and we've been pursuing rezoning our very small area way before both of those came to the table even. So to have those two approved and their plans approved, and then, again, this is the same street everybody's going to be using. The city is already going to be taking part of 405 to make the turning onto Nightingale. So now we have a very small Cedar Cross front property. And again, a portion of that's going to be used. Totally get it, makes complete sense. But now you've, that lot, who's going to build a house on there? So the city's development is altering what we can do with what we have. So we're between a rock and a hard place.
Julie, just so you know, I got you about six minutes and 30 seconds here.
Okay, okay.
So can you give us some final thoughts?
Yeah, very good, yeah.
Appreciate that.
So basically, with the progress that's been made through town, it's been impossible. I understand the progress. It's just the side effect of that is, okay, here we are. So we're sitting here with the property, again, whoever would purchase it, we are not developers. We don't claim to be developers. This is purely so we can sell it. We, again, we had a life course change, and that's just what our current situation is. And as far as anybody that's currently in the area having to move, that's, you're being pushed out of their home, which I heard someone was concerned about. It's ludicrous, because I have, I don't even know how that would be possible. So anyway, that's all I have on that, and if you have any questions, all right?
Thank you, Julie, for your comments. Any other thoughts this evening? Please, come on up.
My name is Carol Moss, and I live at 3095 Nightingale. And, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I just want to point out a few things. As stated in my last, latest email, I am not one to stand in the way of progress. You know, progress is going to happen. However, if change is not going to be for the betterment of existing homes and properties, that's when I become concerned. Changing from R1 to R4 is a drastic measure, considering the layout of the property. I would refer to it as placing a small village in a little neighborhood or made up of homes and businesses. And I just, I want to urge the Murfords to reconsider changing from R1 to R4. There are more compatible zoning choices, I believe. That would be more adaptable for all of us. Going to R4 as a neighborhood, we have no idea what will be happening in that area. As homeowners, my husband and I have spent 52 years building our little home. And as an afterthought, last night, I just happened to think what this will do to my property taxes. You know, and that, right now, is probably some, you know, we don't know that. But there's just other uncertainties in the whole thing. And I think that's what we have to agree on something. But thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you, Carol, for your comments. Anyone else this evening? All right, no one else here? Anyone virtually?
Carol Moss did mention that she submitted written input, as well as Clark and Sharon Payne of 470 Woodland Ridge.
Thank you, Adrian. Okay. Any other items? Otherwise, we're moving on? Okay, we can move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is request to rezone 405 and 575 Cedar Cross Road, second reading.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
I'm with second reading of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
I got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Memo on this, coming from anybody? Or we just go on the second reading? Okay, so we can just move on to us. All right, thank you very much. So then, us for discussion here. So I'll start. I got a couple of things. Wally, I'm going to need you. So if you wouldn't mind, please. First of all, thank you, everyone, for being here to give some more input tonight. We appreciate that. I think it's helpful to have this discussion. I'm actually thankful that we are on a second reading and did not waive the three readings to be able to have this discussion a little bit longer. As we mentioned last week, this is, or the last time we were together doing this, this is a bit more complicated of an issue than a lot of other zonings are, just because of the way the territory is laid out. I think that was recognized by us as a city council up here. And obviously, we didn't agree on it. So we are here to talk about it again. A couple of things that I just want to, just want to say, just to open with. And then I do have a very specific question for you, Wally. First of all, I, when I'm, of the last few years, making zoning decisions in my own mind and thinking about what it means for residential zoning in particular, it is housing that is on my mind most of the time. It's kind of where I begin the discussion. I would respectfully disagree. I do not think we are there yet with housing. Based on the studies that we've seen and talked about here, it was about 1,100 units that we were short at the time. And we're, we do have some things in the pipeline. Things are moving. We have more than 1,100 units that we've cleared the way for. I don't think we expect all those units that we've cleared the way to actually be built. Some things are going to work, some things aren't. It's just, it's a bit of a challenge in playing the game of figuring out how much housing does a community really need. But I do think that pushing towards a little more density than we have in the past is actually a healthy thing for our community. But that's a balancing act. It's difficult sometimes to figure out how much density you want in one particular place. And I do have to agree, you don't want to go in with sort of a sledgehammer approach of changing the nature of neighborhoods drastically. That's kind of what we discuss a lot while we're sitting here. I personally live next to multiple apartments and have really enjoyed it, frankly. I mean, it's been, it's been a good experience for me and my family. We have some great neighbors, some who are long-term renters, actually, We have some great neighbors, some who are long-term renters, actually, who stick around quite a bit and have become friends, and it's a, it's a nice thing to have in the community. So I don't think the apartments themselves are bad. I don't think the density itself is bad. I think housing is still necessary. However, this parcel is interesting, and I've spent the last, the time between, the last time we talked about this and now, basically scouring our interactive zoning map, which is fascinating and more fun than I'd like to admit, to be able to look through the zoning map. But what's interesting in looking at that, and this is my question for you, Wally, are there any other places that you can think of that are really, that are, that are kind of like this? There, there are a few spots here and there that I think of through town where you have apartments in a place that is primarily residential. One is near where I grew up, over by Kennedy Elementary School, for example. There's some R4 zoning that's right in that area, kind of near Foothill, and it's there, and you've got it kind of right in the middle of an R1, some R2. But the difference there is that there's, you always talk about buffers with zoning, and the difference there is that there seems to be more of a buffer between the R1 and where the R4 comes in there. This property being what it is in this sort of L shape right there, and the R4 essentially enveloping one R1 home with the, the commercial service next to it, it seems different than anything else we, we might have in town. So I just wanted to hear your comments on that a little bit more so I can understand that situation.
Yes. First of all, Wally, we're my planning services director. Yes, you're correct. So other areas that'd be kind of similar to this, this is, understand that this was developed in the county. So when you talk about those other areas you're mentioning, those were under the review of the, in the city of Dubuque underneath planned and managed growth, where we had site plan review process, curb, gutter, develop, and how, how that was all developed over time. This portion of our community was actually developed in the county and has been annexed into the city. Other areas that are very similar to this would be, if you can think of Roosevelt Road on Peru Road, we have some areas that were county subdivisions that were built in the county and are annexed in our community. There's some other areas throughout our, our community that's similar. So we have these areas that weren't built to city standards. That's where we kind of have that, that kind of that conversation or discussion. Peru Road is a minor arterial, just like Cedar Cross Road's a minor arterial, and you see a transitioning or a transformation of these areas in our community. Peru Road had heavy industrial uses located at the corner. That is, we've had an entire residential subdivision get built right next to that heavy industrial use. We had a gas station located on the corner. We have a mobile home facility located behind that. We have actually some requests from vacant land right now for everything from, we've had apartment complex proposal to single-family homes to duplexes, very similar to this where it's a piece of property that's been sitting there for many years, and why hasn't it developed? Sometimes there's factors associated with it, access to the property, traffic, lot area, utilities. In that situation, that's something very similar to this property. So when I mentioned this property, or this area has a mosaic of different uses, as you can see the area, it's been developed, you know, we have an ice plant, we have a daycare center, we have single-family homes, we have Cedar Cross Road, which has been approved all the way up to birch heating and cooling, and then we have a section that hasn't been approved, and then it's been approved down by the Casey Store, some of the newer developed that you're seeing. So it's an area that's in transition. You've kind of seen that turnover of, of the neighborhood. So it is very unique in the fact that when we sit there and we talk about this, it's, we're asking for a rezoning to an R4. We don't have a plan. I think there's the fear of the unknown. An R4 can allow everything from a single-family home to a duplex or up to 12, up to a 12-unit row house or, or apartment. So as we look at the development here and the current configuration, access is a big discussion, as we discussed with traffic. Sanitary sewer is obviously a big conversation going on right now. So it is a unique, unique situation. It's not like as easy as some of those other zoning districts that come through. It's very, pretty clear to be able to see what, what makes the most sense. But it is a unique, unique layout of land located on Cedar Cross Road.
Okay. Thanks, Wally. I'll hold there. I got maybe another question, but we'll hold off. Yeah, Mr. Spring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Wally, theoretically, say, a developer does want to put like, just like a two-story apartment building on it, would the access have to be off Cedar Cross? Or, or is it only Nightingale? Or how does, because it is, because it does have access to both, and so that's my, that was my concern, was like, where would they actually theoretically have the best access? Or we can't, or you wouldn't know until somebody brings you a plan.
Exactly. That's, without the current layout or proposed plan of where the access would come through, I can't really make a determination whether or not it'd be Nightingale Lane or if it'd be Cedar Cross Road. And then when we talk about Cedar Cross Road, there will be a turn lane that has been discussed. You know, that proximity to that right turn lane impacts where access could come to that property. But that lot currently has frontage along Cedar Cross Road. This other lot has frontage along Nightingale Lane. There could be a situation, someone could purchase the property and replant it and reconfigure it in a different way. So until we actually have a fiscal plan, it's a little bit more difficult than going straight to a rezoning without having something. Normally, you guys have seats, have a plan before you have, this is why I want to rezone the property. And we do have situations where people want to rezone property and make it more marketable, like in this situation. But until we have a plan, I can't really answer a direct question about the access. We had a planned unit development. It was very clear where the access and everything was coming for that one, but this might be a little bit different situation.
Thank you. Ms. Farber, and then Mr. Eszner.
So I like your statement about the fact that it's a mosaic of different uses up and down Cedar Cross Road, and I travel that road quite frequently. I'm also, as the mayor had said, very supportive of apartment living. Up until the time I returned to Dubuque, I lived in apartments most of my life, no matter where I lived. So I think, and it is kind of fun to have apartment buildings, that's just another community where people, you know, live, work, play, grow up, and, and move, move around if they so choose to buy homes. But I have confidence, number one, in the, the development review team as, as the planning surfaces, and I think it's quite interesting. We do not know what that plan is, as you have stated. So this is really just a decision, I think, about owners wanting to sell their property and changing from R1 to R4 just to give options to whoever does purchase it. So it's really, I have just enormous confidence in the design review team that indeed all the proper development issues will be taken care of, and the design will be appropriate to meet city standards, et cetera. So I'm, I'm kind of in the corner here where I support this, and because it's, it is a mosaic, and we really just don't have enough information, and, and again, I have confidence in you and your team that you will bring us the, the right and the correct things for us to be looking at when that does occur. We just don't know.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Eszner.
Thank you, and I have done some reconnaissance this week, a couple times, going out, looking at the neighborhood, looking at the property. And I think it's important to, to do that, to look around. There's, there are a lot of homes on Nightingale. I definitely agree with the Zoning Advisory Commission's chairperson, Matt Mulligan, that this property may support. Realistically, he says, a couple of duplexes going in there. And because, as Ms. Farber mentioned, options, that's, that's, that's the problem with R4. There's a lot of options that wouldn't be great. And our planning department likes to help developers to achieve their goals. A lot of times when they come here, it's not that they're going to be, they would like this development and this developer to have a, a successful plan. So they can put in a lot of different things, and they're not saying that they necessarily would, would vote for it or not, but this is a plan that they were requested to go with. It does go through a lot of channels, which I appreciate. But I think that we really have to be careful about overzoning this. Once I got across the street and turned down Nightingale, took me forever to get back on Peru Road, especially if I was going to the other side. It is very crowded. What about this property? It is a lovely spot. I mean, it is a lovely spot. So, nice trees, maybe some will have to be taken out eventually, but, you know, I do think that we need to avoid overzoning, which it says it could lead to overdevelopment and might not be compatible with the character of the neighborhood, as was mentioned earlier, or the needs of the other people in the area. So I really think we need to be concerned about a neighborhood when we're talking about residential zoning. So again, if, if Mr. Mulligan was correct that this might have a couple of duplexes going in there, then why are we doing R4? Too many options. I would, I would agree that it could be, probably has to be rezoned from R1 to be, to be proper in that and to sell in the neighborhood. But R2, I'm not a zoning expert, but I think from what the information we've gotten, R4 is too much for this property, too much for the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Bethel.
So I went back one more time last night, and you guys have some nice deer in your neighborhood at dusk. So it's busy, but for some reason, deer in Dubuque aren't scared off very easily. I also would respectfully disagree with Mr. Caman, the need. So we, we do have a need for housing, and I know it's, it's hard to put into numbers, but we forecast that we're going to need housing, not just now, but hopefully so that my kids move back in five, 10 years, you know? And we don't have that right now for workforce, for people that are police and teachers and nurses, affordable housing, but housing that people really love to live in. And so I do feel called to make sure that I am supporting housing in our community. I looked up just as a refresher to myself, Wally, R2, the maximum is two dwellings, and R3, a maximum is six dwellings.
Six, yep.
And I remember asking the first time this came to us, so I would be waiting for the design review team to basically do what I think, which is, I don't think there should be 12. Maybe they're, they would let it be eight or 10. No, I'm, if I pass this tonight, I'm saying, I'm not going to put the design review team in a rock and a hard place here. If I say this is okay, I'm saying 12 is okay. And so that is the, that's the fine line here, is that it's my responsibility to develop our housing, not just to throw it all in anytime we get a place to do it, but to do it responsibly. And so I would concur with the idea that I think density is a good thing, but there isn't really a buffer for that density in this space to that level, to a 12-unit level that I can forecast. I'm, I'm not an engineer. I'm a nurse practitioner. So I, I don't claim to understand how that would or would not work, but I can appreciate that the mosaic would dramatically change as opposed if we were going for an R2 or an R3, which I think actually would be more manageable. And I think it would feel more in the correct placement for the access issues of concern. The statements by Ms. Moss on the kind of drasticness of the change does speak to me a little bit as I stalk your neighborhood more. So I, I can appreciate that, and although I want housing just as much as the next person, I want to be responsible in how I recommend it. And so I don't plan to support this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
There are a lot of big scary things that could happen in an R4 if you're in the neighborhood. But the size of the property very much limits what they can be, and I think the zoning advisor commission took that into consideration, into pretty careful consideration, particularly given their comments back to us. I'm not at all convinced that we're full, that we've accomplished all we need to do in, in creating residential living units in the city. In fact, we've got enormous caches of data that tell us that we're not ready, that we're, we still need to reach. So I, you could zone this anything you wanted, and you wouldn't see 12plexes on the property because they just won't fit. And we do have a process that assures that things that are actually built will fit. But two duplexes would be too many units for R2, and probably a very reasonable solution. Even if they were a large number of properties, the traffic impact of that is insignificant compared to the traffic that already exists on Cedar Cross Road. So the traffic issue really isn't an issue. These are always challenging areas where you've got what was once kind of a highway and a rural road, and really no planning or zoning in its creation because it predated that concept. So those are challenging neighborhoods. We've got a few of them around town that, that are a mishmash of all kinds of things. I think our processes are in place to protect neighbors from unreasonable development in, you know, compatible with zoning in, in an area. So I'm not frightened that it's going to get overbuilt, and I do support the commission's conclusion, and I count on our team to do the right thing as, as a process or as a proposal, which by the, there's, there's no proposal right now to build anything. It's just the owner trying to sell the property. And one of the tenants that I hold pretty dear is that the property owner's rights to what happens to the property are probably higher than my rights not owning the property, as long as they're not causing me harm. And I'm having trouble seeing any real harm to anybody if this just gets rezoned. It may not sell still. It's looking like that for another 20 years. Or someone may buy it and say, I'm going to put a house here. All of those things are unknown. But what we do know is that we have a, a robust development review team process that analyzes actual proposals, none of which exist yet, and will assure that it's not going to cause tremendous harm to the neighborhood. That's what I meant tonight.
Mr. Jones. Ms. Russell, do you have anything?
Yes, I have a couple of things. One, I'm glad that they've thought about not putting commercial right in this residential area. Number two, this property's been on the market for a long time, which says that developers are not looking for it the way it is currently zoned. And I think that a zoning change will allow flexibility for potential donors to help us to get the housing that we need or to, to make something new of this property. However, I agree that the, the land size and shape will minimize or the options that are there. And lastly, I agree that our DRT team will help any developer that does come to the property to make it the best possible scenario for this neighborhood, perhaps even including a buffer between some of the areas that we often see in development agreements. So I think these are the kinds of things that our commission has reviewed thoroughly and talked about, and, and so I'd like to support the commission with their decision on this change.
All right, thanks, Ms. Russell. Wally, one of my follow-up questions is, as, as people, as property owners come to rezone, do they get suggestions from the planning department on, you know, what could work there and those types of things? I mean, this property's obviously been through a couple of different iterations here. There was a commercial possibility, or is it more guidance on what would happen if you were zoned in that direction?
It's, so we have people come in our office all the time, and they request like, I would like to rezone my property. Usually they have an idea what they want to use at that location. So they may come and say, hey, I would like to use the property here, and we identify what the most proper zoning district would be identified for it. We had a request initially when it came in, said I want to use it for commercial property. Let's look at expanding the CS commercial zoning district. I didn't go through. Then we looked at also the planned unit development side of things, where they were looking at much higher density development. That was a developer was actually working with the Merfels on that property. That's where you had a PUD request that came through, which a PUD actually has a lot more length control over. You can see, actually see the plan, the layout, the design, everything that's associated with it. So when they come into our office, we help provide some guidance with regards to zoning. But in this case, this property is really what they're looking at doing. It wasn't a direct suggestion of the planning department to go to an R4, R2, R3, because it's really, it's really just kind of wide open of what's being proposed. So a lot of times when they do come into our office, if they're adjacent to an existing district and we can expand that, that's a little bit more ideal. But in certain situations, it's really kind of what the applicant's looking for.
I am legitimately torn on this one. I really am. This is a, this is a tough one to vote for, and clearly, we're not in agreement up here either, which, which is, is totally fine and natural, and it's the reason why we, we go through this process, because there's not one of us who is smart enough to do this. We all have to do it together, and that's why we have multiple member city council to do it. A couple of things that I'm hearing, and, and then I'm going to do my best to come to a conclusion, and I do not know if it'll be the right one. But the, I've heard a lot that, about the DRT process. I can't stress enough how much I agree that we need to trust our development review team. They do a good job. They work really hard to make sure that the city's character stays the way the character needs to be, while also trying to help property owners and developers do the best they can to provide the best... do the best they can to provide the best places for people. So that process is the thing that will decide what ends up here eventually. It is not what is, what is this product, or this, this parcel is rezoned as. So I want to stress that, because I think we could, we could really go down some rabbit holes in thinking about what this could be, just because we land on a certain zoning. I honestly think we'd be having the same discussion if we were talking R3 right now instead of R4, just because there, there are some things that I think that are, are there that I, I think are, are basically the same, aside from the difference in, in the units that are there. We do have a, a decision from the zoning advisory commission, where the, the large majority of that commission did decide to rezone this and suggested that to us as a city council. So that's, that's there, too. I do want Mr. and Mrs. Murfeld to sell this property, and I want them to sell it at a profit. I think that's what I would like for property owners who have profit, property. I think it's, it's fair that we should have that right, to be able to do that. It is their property to, to do that with. I guess my biggest question is, you know, this, this idea of, of over, you know, Mr. Resnick, you really made some good points, I think, the idea of overzoning. And, and that is my biggest question in this particular plot of land, is are we, are we, are we one over where we should be? Is this really more of an R3 parcel than it is an R4? And that's my, my biggest concern here. And I'm just trying to figure out if, you know, I, I, what I, what I want people to understand is that I do trust the development review team, I do trust the zoning advisory commission. I want them to, to be able to do their work, and we're right on the precipice here of being able to agree with them. But I, I think based on what I'm hearing tonight, that I'm, my, my thoughts are different than what they were in the end, last, the last time we voted on this. I, I do think that if we were, if, if we came, if, if an R3 was before me tonight, I would absolutely vote for it. But I am concerned, looking at this and thinking about this area, and even though it is a, you know, a mosaic, as you're saying, I, I, I do worry that R4 is a bit too much for this particular parcel. So I, I voted the other way last, last time, but I, I've actually been convinced after thinking about this more and listening to the arguments of my colleagues, because I've been legitimately on the edge for the entire time. So I'm, I'm going to vote against this tonight, and, and hope that we get a, an R3 proposal in front of us, because I think it would be something that I would be able to vote on. I, I do wish the best for this property and wish the best for the neighborhood. And I, I want to say one more thing before we, we go to a vote. I know this gets, this can get personal really fast, but I, I encourage everybody to try to keep it as impersonal as possible in, in talking about this. I don't think this is about somebody being, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't claim that Mr. and Mrs. Murfeld are being too greedy in this case and trying to do something. They're just trying to do something with their property to get it moving. I think that's fair. And I think they're just trying to find the right way to do that. So as neighbors, I hope that we can continue to try to work together to get this done. I know as a council, we're going to do the best that we can to make the best decisions possible at any time. But I, I always encourage that when we talk about rezoning, because it can become personal pretty quickly. But it really is about just people trying to do the best thing that they can. So with that, unless there's any other comments. Yeah, Wally, please.
So just wanted to bring up a suggestion, that's a possibility.
Okay.
You do have the ability to remand this back down to the zoning advisory commission to consider an R3 zone. If it does proceed tonight, and it does not pass as an R4 zone, the Murfords could go back to the zoning advisory commission. What would happen is they'd have to pay a new application fee and go through the process. If it's remanded back down to the zoning advisory commission, there would be no additional fee that could be charged. So that's, that's an option, if that's how you guys feel, but I just wanted to put that out on the table before you made a vote. Krenna, is that?
Yep, you're right.
Okay. Wally, that's why you're here. I really appreciate that suggestion. Thank you. The, the motion came from Mr. Jones, so I need to go back to you first to ask if you have any intention of, you would have any interest in changing your motion.
If, if my motion fails, if the second reading fails, I would certainly support remanding.
Can, can we, can we make that decision as a council if the, if the vote fails? Krenna?
Give me a minute. At this point in time, because it is rezoning and it's a second reading, I think your options are going to be limited to doing the second reading or the waiver. So I think your better bet may be to have discussion on Wally's suggestion to determine the lay of the land before moving forward with an amendment or a, a vote that would not allow you that flexibility.
So essentially, just to, just to break that down in a summary, to make it really clear, if we, if we vote and this fails, this motion fails that's on the table right now, then what ends up happening is the, the process ends, and Mr. and Mrs. Murfeld do have to return back to planning and the zoning advisory commission with the added fee to?
Yes, sir.
To have to do that. Thank you. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And so that, in turn, would not, would not allow for public input until it came back to us, or I guess when it went to the commission? There would be an opportunity for public input, say if we went to an R3 recommendation, the public input process would begin again?
Correct, both at the commission and then when it came back to this body.
May I address?
Please.
So if it was remanded back to the zoning advisory commission, what would happen is we would re-notify all property owners within 200 feet of the property. We would repub, we would publish it as rezoning the property to R3. We would, in our staff report, we would note that it's been remanded back by the city council to the, for that consideration. There'll be a whole new public hearing that would go through and for the discussion. They would make a new recommendation, and it would come back before the city council.
Hang on, Ms. Murfeld still has the floor?
I'll yield.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Would you be so kind as to explain R3 compared to R4, so that we can have a calibration here between the two differences? And again, we don't even know what will happen.
Right, right. So the city of Dubuque zoning is what's called Euclidean, so what's allowed in an R1 district, which is a single-family residential, is allowed in an R2. An R2 allows a duplex and a single-family home. An R3 would allow a single-family home, a duplex, or a multifamily development up to six units. And that could be row houses, it could be stacked units, could be, you know, any configuration for six total units. R4 would allow single-family home duplexes and anything up to 12 units. It's based on lot size, 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit. We have different setbacks slightly between the two. We have a three-foot side yard setback in an R, in an R3, I believe it's four foot in R4, I'd have to double-check on that off the top of my head. But the parking requirements are the same. So what happens is it's, it's still a dense development, it's just that it can't be as dense as 12 units, it'd be limited to six units per lot, so.
Okay, and then the other question is, does the DRT give input if there are too many units being proposed by whoever does purchase and potentially develop, if indeed that would happen?
Sure. So the role of the development review team would be, is when a site plan's required. So a site plan's required for anything that's three units or more. So if there's just a single-family home or a duplex, the zoning, the development review team would not review those requests. So they don't actually weigh, weigh into the total number of units that are associated with the property. It would be what's allowed by the zoning district. Do they meet all the requirements for setbacks? If they do not meet requirements for setbacks, that would have to go before a zoning board adjustment for waivers, for, for size, lot, and everything. That's a whole nother public hearing. That's before a quasi-judicial board, which their decisions are final, they do not come before the, this city council, like rezonings do. So, so they don't actually dictate the number of units. They would look at, does the city have the capacity to be able to serve those areas, as with the development, and they could go from there for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones, I think the floor is yours to move us forward, so you, I hate to put it on you, but it is on you.
I, I understand. I don't want to, don't want to cause the applicant additional costs and grief. Let me, let me withdraw my motion, if that's okay with the secondary, and someone else can move a direction.
It's fine.
All right. So we'll need a motion on the table to move forward, then?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Russell?
I would move that we, move this back to the, to the commission for an R3 recommendation, or, or Wally, what is the proper verbiage for the motion?
Remand to the, to the commission.
Remand. I would, I move that we remand this to the commission for consideration of an R3 recommendation.
Farber seconds.
All right, thank you, Ms. Russell, and Ms. Farber seconds. Is everyone clear on the motion on the table?
I do have a question for.
Sure, yeah, Mr. Resnick first.
I don't have questions on the motion, though.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
So the commission wants this remanded to them, they could still present a recommendation for R4, could they not?
So if you're remanding it back to them to look at R3, they should be using that as their guardrails to come back to you. That's not to say that it would be impossible for them to say, we've already told you, we think R4 works here. They may, they may provide that along with an R3 recommendation, I don't know.
Just, just curiosity, not having been in this particular corner before.
Yep.
In a number of years of sitting here.
Yeah, all right, thanks, Mr. Jones. Mr. Resnick?
My question was this particular motion by, that we have on the floor here and seconded by Ms. Russell. Now, does that, that, when we remanded back, that means there won't be an additional fee from, okay, from the Murfords?
That is correct.
So that, that, that's a good thing, and I also think that the R3 is a good thing. So I intend to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, clarification? All right. So motion on the table is to remand this back to the zoning advisory commission to consider an R3 zoning. Got a motion by Russell, seconded by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone, for helping us through that process, Krenna and Wally in particular. Wally, have you anything else?
Nope, just, I just want to let everyone know that it'll be at the discretion of the Murfords, what zoning advisory commission agenda will be placed on, and once again, we will not, re-notify all property owners within 200 feet of that rezoning, so.
All right, thank you, Wally.
Action item number two is First Amendment to Development Agreement with Kinseth Hospitality Incorporated.
Mr. Jones?
I'm going to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second. Got a motion by Jones and a second by Resnick. Corey, please.
Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving the attached First Amendment to Development Agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Kinseth Hospitality Company, Inc., for the construction of two Marriott Hotels in the Port of Dubuque. The development agreement provided for February 1st, 2025, closing. Due to unforeseen difficulties in the lending environment, the developer has requested that the closing, as well as all other milestones in the development agreement, be delayed by six months. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Corey. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
This is unfortunate, but it's, it's very real. The whole banking environment has been shaken to its core, along with everything else in the last few months, so I, I get it.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a, this is a concern, I mean, obviously. And first of all, let me say, I want to absolutely thank Kinseth Hospitality for, you know, continuing to work with the city and continuing to move forward on this project. This is a really exciting project. We were very excited about it when it first came before us. Would love to see this hotel and intend to see this hotel in the Port of Dubuque. The challenge is, what we're starting to see, and this actually kind of relates a little bit to the conversation we just had about housing. We're talking to a lot of housing developers that are also running into the same financial challenges. I'm sure days like today don't help at all, as we are looking at the things like the, the downfall in the market and where that might go tomorrow. There are a lot of question marks, and it's really challenging. And I, I do think that our financial institutions are, are trying. I think they're trying to be helpful and trying to serve in the capacity that they need to serve in to help development move in Dubuque. But I would ask, just in a way, anything that they can do, especially locally, that our local finance, financial institutions can do to help in, along in this process, to help the process of development. I, I do ask that they continue to step up and continue to work with developers, and we will do the same. We're going to try to do the same to honor these development agreements that we have in place, move them forward, and definitely intend for this one to go. And it is unfortunate we have to delay, but I completely understand why, and we'll agree with that need for now. Okay? Any other comments or discussion? All right, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is Work Session Request: Equitable Poverty Reduction and Prevention Plan Update.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and set, schedule the work session for June 2nd at 5:15.
Second by Wethel?
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel, for a council meeting, I believe. All right, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And motion passes 7-0.
Action item number four is Quarterly Update Video on New Housing Development Projects.
Mr. Mayor? I motion that receive and file and watch the video.
Got a motion by Sprank, second by Wethel, for a council meeting, I believe. All right, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And motion passes 6-0.
Next are council member reports.
What do we got?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Sprank?
This, yesterday, my neighborhood association, the Northland Neighborhood Association, did a family fun day, and it was from like, 4 to 6, maybe went to 6:30. We had about 100-ish folks show up, which was really nice, kids, had games, stuff for them to all do, and we all had fun. I did not realize how complicated Lego sets have gotten, because we, I thought it'd be fun for a bunch of little kids to put together Legos. They had fun, except bouncing from five different kids in five different stages was not fun for me, but otherwise, it was, it was a good day, so. Yeah, that's all, that's all I got. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Mr. Sprank. Mr. Jones, go for it.
Well, it's been, it doesn't feel like it's been three weeks since we were together, and that's because it hasn't. It was three weeks ago we had our last city council meeting, general meeting. We've had three budget meetings since then that have been fun, and we're going to have three more this week, so don't go away, keep coming back. March 17th, most of us traveled to Des Moines for Dubuque Night with Chamber of Commerce and, and the Leadership Dubuque Class, and had a real good evening, and were entertained very well by David and, and his traveling troubadours. But the Travel Dubuque Board, the DRA Board, the 23rd and the 25th. The 31st, I had a pretty significant meeting I went to. The National Guard Force in Dubuque is being deployed overseas pretty soon, and they had a meeting that we got invited to, to kind of explain what's going to happen in the next few weeks as they prepare for this, and to help the families find the support networks that they might need while their, their soldiers are gone. It'll be a one-year deployment, so it's going to impact Dubuque in a lot of ways. It'll be, some of our employees will be, will be leaving us. And they talked about all the things that are in place to, to provide support to those families while the troops are gone. I was able to offer a couple of things that we talk about in the fire department a lot. us. And they talked about all the things that are in place to provide support to those families while the troops are gone. I was able to offer a couple of things that we talk about at the fire department a lot. One of the most important things for a firefighter to know when they come to work is that their family knows what to do if a tornado happens or if a fire happens in their home or something, that they have a safe place to go to, so that, God forbid, we get a strike, all of us public safety people are worrying about our jobs instead of worrying about our homes. And that was helpful to them. And a lot of their work is towards that end. Some of the simple things that employers can do, and that probably we should explore as a city, maybe it's not out of line that while our employee soldier is deployed, that we find a way to take care of snow shoveling and grass cutting at the residents. A lot of companies do that. Employees step up and do that. We could certainly do simple things like that. It's a matter of law that the job remains available to the traveling soldier. But a lot of brave people are going to be leaving the area to go do security work. This isn't a new deployment. This is the replacing unit that's been doing security work at a base in Syria. So that's, they've got that to look forward to. My takeaway from this, and about 40 years ago, I was privileged to go do medical training, trauma care training, for military units all around the country. About every month, I'd get two assignments for a three-day weekend to fly somewhere, do a two-day class in advanced trauma life support, and then return home. And a couple of those, they were marching soldiers right out of our class onto airplanes to send them to Iraq. So it was pretty compelling. But then and now, the leadership is exactly the person you want your kid to be with if things went very bad. So that was pretty impressive. Going on, I've been doing ribbon cutting at Bud's Florist. They've got new owners and a nice, fairly new shop. It looks pretty cool. April 1, I went to a class on landfill fires. And you wouldn't think that's a big deal, but in lithium-ion battery world, that's a really big deal. I've been on the landfill board for 20 years. I didn't know we had three or four fires a week that the guys just manage on-site. They're expert at it. But it brings a lot of developments. And some of our mutual aid fire departments, as well as Dubuque Fire, was present. But one of the real takeaways from that is for first responders to not think of it as just the dump. It's a multimillion-dollar piece of critical infrastructure. And a cubic yard of garbage is really good fuel once a little lithium-ion battery gets squashed just wrong. So to anybody listening, we have absolutely free battery disposal at our Public Works Service Center, Municipal Services Center in Kriper Court, and some other locations around the county. You just drop it in a box, any battery. A phone with a sealed battery that you're done with, we've got a place for that. Your laptop that you can't change your battery, we've got a place for that. Doesn't cost you a nickel. And people might ask, well, why don't you just do the lithium-ion batteries if they're the problem? Because you don't have to know what battery you've got. We'll just take care of all of them and dispose of them properly. So that's an up-and-coming program. We've got a challenge coming at us. It'd be more an agency challenge than a city council challenge. But our employees running the dozers and the compacters, every bit is involved in the firefighting effort is the firefighters. But they haven't got the protections that the firefighters do, either statutory at the state level, or we're particularly concerned about respiratory protection, how to protect the guy in the dozer from an increasingly toxic and heated atmosphere. So that conversation, those conversations, and nobody has the answer to that in a landfill anywhere. It's a national issue. Went to a grand opening on the 4th at TNT Equipment Rental, a massive Dubuque-owned and operated facility that has aerial lifts and power equipment of every make and type. I congratulate them. Very significantly, April 4, David and I were at the Dubuque Metropolitan Solid Waste Agency Special Meeting, where I had the honor of finally, after 20 years of trying, signing the resolution that will begin construction of the customer convenience center at the landfill. And this will be a huge change for everybody, including the guys we talked to out front tonight. We'll get them out of line and, you know, headed in to get their trucks emptied and back en route a lot quicker. And the residential customer with a pickup truck or a trunk loader, backseat full of stuff, will have a sheltered, safe place to, without waiting in the same land. There'll be a separate scale for the center. They can take recyclables there. They can take their garbage there. And for the garbage portion, well, you just dump it on the floor and drive away. It's pretty cool. We'll come along with a skid steer and push it into the hole and away it'll go. So that's a big deal. It's been coming for a long time. It's here. Still going to take a little time to get it built, but it's coming. Oh, a few of us spent a few budget meetings. So sorry for such a long report, but a couple of those were really significant, I thought.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, Ms. Farber?
Yeah, so I had the fortune and just a really wonderful, fun experience of being a second grader last week. And I was at Eisenhower, and I was with the first class for the second graders for the two-by-two character development. And it was like so much fun. And the way that they introduced the character development and the loving and the caring for the animals was just amazing. And our role was to be an animal coach. So we got to help learn all about the animals for every child in that room, and what their name was, and who they're going to care for over the next six weeks, and what they're going to learn about in terms of helping to take care of another person and another animal. And it was just delightful. And I am really sorry I'm not in second grade, because that was so much fun. And it was just a great learning experience. And I even fit into those little chairs. So I was very happy about that. And another fun thing was actually, tonight, we gave the proclamation to Hempstead, and I was honored to speak at their gathering that they had in celebration. And the whole team was there, and all the families were there. And remarkable, and we talked about the fact of the special sections of the relays and all of the things that they had and all the records that they had broken for the state, not only for Hempstead, but also for the state. And so what an accomplishment. And they were all there with their blonde hair. So they had all, that's a tradition that they color their hair blonde. So it was just a lot of fun and with great joy. And Rick was there as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr.?
I just hang a footnote on that. Tafaro Corporation, the Jones Kennedy Mall, presented Hempstead High School with a check for $10,000.
Wow.
In and out of their way.
That's awesome. That's great. Thanks for adding that. Ms. Wethel?
Mr. Jones mentioned that tonight, the Public Works Department had our two new refuse trucks outside, out front. And I just wanted to thank them for bringing those in, but thank them for making some pretty tight turns in the city of Dubuque. But having the ability to have new equipment to do that, I think, is key to supporting our infrastructure and service to our residents. So thank them for bringing it, but really thank them for all they do. This past weekend, I just wanted to call attention, the Bluff Street Neighborhood Association took the funds related to our grant program to the neighborhood associations and utilized it to put pots, planters out along Bluff Street this year, as we invite guests to come to Dubuque. That is a great community work, great community job. And especially with the soon-to-be-finished Cathedral of St. Raphael renovation, which will be open later this month. I think it's just, it feels like spring down on Bluff Street and in Ward 4. Thank you.
Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention that the Dubuque Symphony Orchestra has a very fine education program that I don't know that everybody knows. Of course, you know them for their fantastic concerts downtown and everywhere. Now, they'll play in lots of different places. And so I'm stepping down as one of the educational conductors. I've been for the past three-plus years conductor of the Dubuque Youth Wind Ensemble, some fine musicians that I've been very blessed to work with. But I just wanted to let people know that there's a lot going on at these arts organizations that not, you don't always notice all the time, but there's a lot of work that goes into helping our youth and to keeping the symphony program up and as fine as it is. So I just wanted to report that to the citizens. There's a lot going on at the Dubuque Symphony Orchestra, including a fine educational opportunity for many. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you. Well, thanks to a scholarship from Main Street, Iowa, I am able to attend the Main Street America Conference here in Philadelphia this week. And I'm here with Jill Connors, our Economic Development Director. Jill and I represent the city of Dubuque on the Dubuque Main Street Board. So we're really excited to have the opportunity to network with people from across the country and hope to bring back some great ideas that we can share with our community. And lastly, I would like to say congratulations to the new executive director of Dubuque Main Street, Mr. David Barba. So I hope that everyone will get a chance to meet him soon. He's energetic and enthusiastic and will do great things for our Main Street program. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Russell. Well, I'll go quick to wrap us up before we go to our closed session here, but tougher stuff first and then fun stuff. So tougher stuff, you took me back three weeks. I didn't realize how much has happened in three weeks. I actually, right after our last city council meeting, testified at a property tax subcommittee in the Iowa Senate on the property tax legislation that's moving through the Senate. There is, I would say, currently still a whole lot of question marks about what this could really look like. Not entirely certain on the path this legislative session, on where this is going to go and how it's going to look. What did come out today, though, is the Iowa League of Cities now has a modeling tool that cities can use to be able to find the impact of the legislation, as it's written currently, on their specific city and the property taxes that would be here. So I think what I want everybody to recognize is that the challenge here is always going to be the question of reducing the property tax burden on individual property taxpayers while still investing in the communities that we live and work in. That's really the biggest challenge here, and I'm hopeful that we can continue to have productive discussions with the legislature on this. Also, attended a subcommittee for the tax increment financing legislation that's also moving through the Senate. So that would be a big impact on Dubuque, and we're keeping a close eye on that one. Now for just plain old fun stuff, welcomes, just a bunch of them. There's so much stuff happening. I was at the Sustainable Communities, the Growing Sustainable Communities Conference multiple times, offering multiple welcomes and hellos for keynote speakers and folks that were there. It was a fantastic time, as always. Gina Bell and her team, thank you very much for that. Welcome the Knights of, the Iowa Knights of Columbus, who I pointed out got their own billboard on Highway 20 when they came to town. So I got to welcome them. That was a lot of fun. We had the DRA Grant Kickoff, which is always another great moment, to be able to get excited about all the things that are coming here for the next year. In Vision 2030, this is a great process that I think we're all going to be a part of. And we're likely going to take the role of actually putting some of these things in motion someday, when the community comes up with 10 great ideas that they want to see by 2030. And then finally, right now in town, there's a really fun group of people called the Midwest Marketplace. Think of Julie and Becky and everybody down at Travel Dubuque, and just multiply it by 200. It's like 200 of those folks all in the same room. It's a really good time, and I welcome them to town today, really just to pitch Dubuque. And they're out, they moved this conference around, but what they're doing is talking about group tours and the important things to, you know, bring people to Dubuque to tour around, go to the Field of Dreams, do all these different things, but do that in various different places in the Midwest. And they're all kind of selling each other's places and products to each other. So it's a really, it's a really great time. So it's a lot of action in Dubuque right now, just a lot of things happening, and it's been really fun to see. So let's go to a closed session. I've got a, we do have a closed session that we need to have, so entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move that the council go into closed session in accordance to Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending sale of real estate.
Second. Yeah, a motion by Jones, second by Resnick. For the record, the attorney the city council will be consulting with on any issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Karen Abramow. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We are in closed session.